Yeah, they're gonna switch their chair around. That'll be our new game here. Look how short he is. You're just gonna switch with your chair and we went on. Okay. Are we ready?
I'm ready.
It is now seven PM and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District two oh four on Monday, May second, twenty twenty-two. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Grover. Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Ms. Fazdick.
Here.
And Ms. Demme.
Present.
We have a quorum. Ms. Fazdick, will you lead us in the pledge? Our next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, May sixteenth. We have a few board salutes tonight, so we'll start with Mr. Rising.
District two oh four students advanced to Nationals and Reflections Art Program. The board salutes the district two oh four students who are advancing to the national level of the National PTA Reflections Art Program. Reflections program provides opportunities for recognition and access to the arts, which boosts students' confidence and success in the arts and in life. Ten students will be moving on to the national level, including, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Tricia Harmaswasiya from Frye Elementary, Heidi Huntington from Graham Elementary, Daria Eri from Kendall Elementary, Leila Hendricks from Owen Elementary, Anna Seinkowitz from Peterson Elementary, Daniel Vega from Watts Elementary, Eden Salem from Hill Middle School, Irene Kim from Skullin Middle School, Karina Young from Nikwa Valley High School, and Avery Brahm from Wabonzi Valley High School. Congratulations to these students on a very well-deserved recognition.
Ms. Jane.
The board salutes Nikwa Valley Senior James Rosenberger as the first DECA national champion in Nikwa Valley history. James placed first in the Business Services Marketing category. DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. Congratulations, James, on this notable achievement.
Mr. Carubus.
Wabonzi Valley Senior achieves rank of Eagle Scout. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley Senior Nathan Soderquist for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest advancement rank in scouting. Eagle Scout service projects give scouts the opportunity to plan, develop, and show leadership and initiative. Nathan's project involved leading a team of individuals who planted native species plants in a forest preserve in Naperville. The plants benefit nature, wildlife, and our community. Congratulations, Nathan, on achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. I have another.
Yes.
Illinois Principal Association Students Awards. The board salutes several district two oh four students who were recently honored at the DuPage Region of the Illinois Principal Association Student Recognition Breakfast. The students were recognized for making positive contributions to their schools and were selected by their principal for achieving high school spirit, having a positive attitude towards classmates, and possessing strength of character and the courage to do what is right. The following students were recognized with Illinois Principals Association Awards. Trinity Hammonds and Isaac Williams from Brookdale Elementary, Kira Hudson and Jonathan Barker from Matea Valley, Maya Clifford and Benjamin Merrilliffe from Nikwa Valley, and Fiona Purcell and Jackson Dowell from Wabonzi Valley. Additionally, Matea Valley Senior Christina Cruz received an IPA DuPage Region Scholarship to pursue a degree in elementary education. We congratulate these students and celebrate their success.
Ms. Fazdick.
Matea Valley students named National Merit Scholars. The board salutes two Matea Valley seniors, Ria Ananpara and Travani Saran, who were recently named twenty twenty-two National Merit Scholars by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Ria and Travani were chosen from more than sixteen thousand semifinalists and selected from students who advanced to the finalist level in the National Merit Scholarship competition and met criteria of their scholarship sponsors. Congratulations, Ria and Travani.
Ms. Grover.
District two oh four high schools rank among the best in Illinois. Niche.com recently released its twenty twenty-two rankings of the best public high schools in the United States. All three district two oh four high schools were ranked in the top fifty in the state, with Nikwa Valley ranking in the top hundred nationally. Nikwa Valley ranked ninety-first nationally and twelfth in Illinois, while Matea Valley and Wabonzi Valley ranked twentieth and twenty-ninth respectively in Illinois. Rankings are based on rigorous analysis of academic and student life data from the U.S. Department of Education, along with test scores, college data, and ratings collected from millions of niche users. Congratulations to all three of our high schools on this outstanding achievement.
Thank you. All right, next up is our Student Representative Report by Nithya Mullapudi from Wabonzi Valley High School.
Good evening. My name is Nithya Mullapudi, and I am a senior at Wabonzi Valley High School, as well as the IPSD Board of Education Student Representative. It is an honor to speak before you all here today. DECA has had a wonderful time at the International Career Development Conference in Atlanta. Four people, Jason Navrajesh, Dhwanie Patel, Max Neri, and Sohom Shah, finished top ten in their event. Way to go. We are so proud of you. BPA is sending twenty-four kids down to Nationals. Skills USA has nineteen people, and Robotics is sending a team of six that are all competing at Nationals as well. Good luck, Warriors. The Wabonzi Valley Prom themed Enchanted Forest will be taking place on May fourteenth. The Junior Student Council has worked really hard, and we hope that everyone attending will have a blast. Senior Sale celebration recently took place, and four hundred and ten students from the senior class registered. It was the first time in person in three years, and it was absolutely amazing. There was a hypnotist show, bouncy house, catered food, sports, bingo, games, games, and more games. Thank you to the senior sail captains who organized such a phenomenal event, as well as the Wabonzi Valley Administration for their help and coordination. As a senior, I would say that it was one of the biggest and best events put together in my four years at Wabonzi, and I had so much fun. AP exams are coming up this week. Good luck to all of our warriors. We have completed the SAT and PSAT testing in April. Thank you to the Wabonzi Valley Administration for putting that together. Great job to all warriors. It is an achievement to be able to have taken the test successfully. Fifty kids were honored at the semester-based Warrior Values Award Ceremony for showing values of perseverance and integrity. We are so proud of all of our warriors. Thank you for your leadership at Wabonzi Valley. As graduation and the commemorative ceremony are upcoming, we are in the process of selecting our speakers for both ceremonies. We have had a lot of seniors apply, and we are so excited for whoever gets selected to motivate their senior class for a better future and their last moments together. Wabonzi held its Operation Support Our Troops Drive, and we are so thankful for everyone who donated. Thank you for all your help and support, warrior families. Today, the Wabonzi and Nikwa Valley baseball teams teamed up for Cal's Angels to honor those fighting for pediatric cancer. WVHS student Caleb Smith threw the ceremonial first pitch. Great job to Wabonzi for winning three-two over Nikwa. Wabonzi Valley Senior Student Council is putting on its annual senior brunch on May twenty-fifth. It will be held at Two Brothers Roundhouse in the morning right before the commemorative ceremony takes place in the evening. Seniors, get your tickets sooner rather than later. Wabonzi's Green and Gold Award Ceremony will be taking place this week. Congratulations to all of our warriors who were invited. You represent the core values of Wabonzi. We held our SpongeBob musical this past weekend, and boy, was it a hit. Thank you to everyone who came and made it a night to remember. We are so extremely proud of our seniors. Great job, everyone. Four out of five people moved on as semifinalists for the U.S. Presidential Scholars Programs at Wabonzi. Congratulations to Sohom Shah, or not Sohom Shah, sorry. Nithya Mullapudi, Jason Navrajesh, Pia Shah, and Rishi Patel. Wabonzi's girls' water polo record is eighteen-five, and we are so proud of them. They're on a four-game record-winning streak. They're ranked twentieth in the country, which is an absolutely phenomenal feat to accomplish. The senior captains, Al Phillipiak and Clara Taylor, have led the way, and we are so proud of their leadership. Great job bringing Wabonzi success, and we can't wait to see what the future holds for this amazing leadership team. Wabonzi's boys' water polo team is also having an awesome season with a twenty-four-three record. They have won multiple tournaments and have created history multiple times this season at Wabonzi. Great job, and continue to keep up this amazing performance, Warriors. I could go on and on about all the amazing things that the students of Wabonzi Valley accomplished. However, this is my final board report. I've had an amazing experience coming monthly to talk to you all about Wabonzi. It truly is a community that makes every student feel like home. I could not have wanted a better high school experience, and I am so grateful for all of the memories. Thank you for providing such a comforting environment, as well as for what you all do to make our school district a better place. I hope you all have a great rest of your meeting, and I wish you all the best for the future. That is all for the IPSD Board of Education Student Report for the date of May second, twenty twenty-two. My name is Nithya Mullapudi. It was a pleasure speaking before you all. I hope everything else runs smoothly, and as always, go Warriors.
So, Nithya. Nithya. So, we want to know what you're doing after Wabonzi.
Oh, okay, so I plan on attending Indiana University's Kelly School of Business to study finance.
Congratulations.
Thank you for all of your talks during the year.
And we will be bringing you back one more time.
Oh, well, okay.
Is there summer eligibility?
All right, it is now time for public comment. Sixty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. So tonight, we only have one public comment, and it is from Sienna Lynn. Welcome, Sienna.
Thank you. Um, can I first pass out a copy of my speech?
Sure. Thank you. Oh, you can be at the microphone? Yeah. Is it, you need to pull it down a bit?
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Dear Superintendent Tally and super school board members, my name is Sienna Lynn, and I'm a fourth grader at Owen Elementary School. My goal for this petition is to increase recess time. My petition for increasing recess got seventy-one signatures from the fourth grade kids at Owen Elementary School. There's an Illinois law that, which requires that recess must be thirty minutes long. I'm asking the school board to make sure every elementary school in District two oh four has thirty minutes of recess every day. I made up a petition to increase recess time from fifteen minutes to twenty minutes. The extra recess would come from decreasing lunchtime. I asked the fourth grade kids if they would like to sign my petition. I got seventy-one signatures from the kids that support this petition. This is about eight percent of the fourth grade. This petition shows that only fourth graders are committed to having extra recess. Also, there's an Illinois law that supports increasing recess time. The Illinois Public Act one zero two dash zero three five seven states that recess must be thirty minutes long for all public schools in grades kindergarten through grade five. This law was signed by Governor Pritzker and went into effect on July first, twenty twenty-one. Not all elementary schools are following this law. My fourth grade class only gets fifteen minutes of recess. I asked some friends from other two oh four elementary schools how much recess time they get. Some classrooms get thirty minutes, some get thirty minutes if they behave, and some only get fifteen minutes. The law states that thirty minutes of recess cannot be taken away from students as punishment. I discussed my petition and the law with school leaders, and they were not interested in helping with my cause. Recess is a very important time for elementary school kids. I would like more recess time. The kids at Owen Elementary School would like more recess time. The Illinois law supports having more recess time. Please make sure all district two oh four schools follow this law for thirty minutes of recess. I asked the superintendent and board to help me with my cause to get every elementary student thirty minutes of recess. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we move to our Consent Agenda and Superintendent Report. We will start with the Superintendent Report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the board, and the Indian Prairie community. The month of May is known as Mental Health Awareness Month. Though schools do a lot regarding mental health throughout the year, the month of May focuses attention on the issues related to mental health. Schools are doing various events and made a spotlight. Mental Health, three sixty Youth Services is supporting us in some of these actions at the middle and high school, and also Kids Matter is also doing activities to support mental health awareness. Tomorrow, Tuesday, is National Teacher Appreciation Day. We take this day to honor our educators who work tirelessly, day in and day out, in support of our students. The role of a teacher has been an ever-changing one from the days of the one-room schoolhouse to now. Of course, over the past two years, the role has changed even more. Nonetheless, what has stayed constant among our educators is a desire to help shape the future of our country and our world by supporting our children in their academic progress. Being a teacher is a calling, one that few answer. The power of teaching may be found in this quote from an unknown source. Teaching is the one profession that creates other professions. I salute all of our teachers tonight for their exemplary, excellent, and engaging skills in preparing our children for their futures. Friday, May sixth, is National Nurses Day. I want to take a moment tonight to thank our nurses in our schools. For the past two years, they have been the guardians of our health. They have helped to ensure the wellness and safety of our students and staff as we have battled COVID. Their work has been beyond the realm of what they thought it would be when they entered the profession. Nonetheless, they stood at the ready to support our children and our adults. Our healthcare professionals in our schools deserve our praise, our gratitude, and admiration for the work they have done. I think this quote from Rossy Williams describes our nurses. To do what nobody else will do in a way that nobody else can do, in spite of all we go through, that is what it is to be a nurse. I thank all of our nurses in our schools for going out above and beyond and doing what many could never do in taking care of our children and our staff. And I will end with some good news regarding a staff member. Over the weekend, our chief school business officer, Mr. Shipley's wife, Jessica, gave birth to their second child, a son, on Saturday. Mother, child, Rory, are all doing well, and we're very happy for the family. I'll turn it back to you, Ms. Donahue.
Oh, such an important month between mental health, which is such an important topic in our schools, our teachers, and the nurses. I think we all feel a lot of gratitude for everything that everyone has contributed to our school district, so thank you. So, our next agenda item is Consent Agenda. I need a motion for Consent Agenda Items D through J.
This is Allison Fazdick. I move that the board approve Consent Agenda Items E through...
J.
J, as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Fazdick.
Yes.
Ms. Grover. Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Demme.
Hi.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
And Ms. Donahue.
Yes. The motion passes. Next, we have an action item. Please identify yourself as you make your motion or second to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school board meeting calendar as presented.
It's Mark Rising. I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school board meeting calendar as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Grover. Ms. Demme.
Hi.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
And Ms. Fazdick.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, now we are on to discussion items. We will now have an update from Rodney Mack regarding Technology Services. Welcome.
There we go. See, usually I have a very loud voice. I don't need a microphone, but... Uh, thanks for the time tonight to speak to you about technology. As this being the first year, I'd like to get in front of the board at least twice a year, once for the normal September update, which is kind of, you know, a whole global, everything we have going on. And then, at a point in spring, always picking a topic that's either timely or pointed, something a little more, that'll go a little bit more in-depth into, um, what we do in the Technology Services Department. This one specifically, I think, with timing and purposes, is about security. I know you get a copy of this ahead of time, so you read through some of it. Trust me, I'm not going to read the forty-four bullet points that came in the first few slides. I just have some highlights on those. But, uh, some of these, the cybersecurity trends, I don't think they show it blue on yours, but a few things, uh, that jump out on this. Forty-five percent, almost fifty percent of the people that responded to a survey said that their organization had been hit with some type of a cyber attack in the year twenty twenty-one, in the past year. Of that, they're saying that the average cost of a data breach was four point two million dollars. They're also saying at the very top that over the next five years, that cost could increase fifteen percent each year. That happens, that would say in twenty twenty-seven, a data breach could cost anyone seven million dollars. Again, that's based on an average, but why are these numbers scary? And I think when we look at the next slide where it goes over the type of organization that's being attacked in twenty twenty-one, by week, there was one thousand six hundred and five on average attacks in education. It's the top industry that's getting hit right now with cyber attacks, ransomware. We see them in the paper. You can, every news channel around here has something of a local school district that has been hit with either a cyber attack, usually ransomware, something along those lines. You'll even go further down and go, there's some that have a hundred and forty-six percent increased software vendors, not as many, probably because they have better systems in place. Looking at education trends by themselves, uh, the key point on that one is the education industry is ranked last in cyber preparedness. There's a reason that we are the most tempted to hack at this time. They don't think that school districts in and of themselves are prepared or ready for this. A lot of that was probably accelerated through the pandemic, with all of a sudden, they knew everybody went home. People opened up their networks to VPNs and allowed people to remote in, when before that wasn't the case. More and more people were relying on passwords that used to just be written and only used in schools. Now people were accessing things outside. There's a, again, I think the pandemic probably really opened up the eyes of some people to say this is an easy target. Ransomware attack statistics. Uh, this is one of the, um... This is probably the most incidence that happens at education, is the ransomware attacks. Quite a few school districts in this area have been hit with these, not just from these national statistics, but one of the scary ones is that ransomware happens every fourteen seconds. Thirty-seven percent of all organizations were hit by ransomware. That's not just education. That's thirty-seven, almost forty percent of all businesses got hit with ransomware in the last year. Again, every industry working remotely, last time, they were, it was easy to get hit. Part of ransomware attacks in this area, people are actually now using, they're looking for, you know, Bitcoin as well. You're paying in Bitcoin, which, you know, say that four years ago, and people would have had, would have thought we were, you know, making this up in some fiction story, but that's what's happening right now. Where they're getting really sophisticated is this concept of social engineering and phishing attacks. I think everyone here knows what phishing attacks are. That's where it just, you know, we've all, we all have that one, that king, that we, the long-lost king that we know that told us he's going to give us the seven million dollars or seven billion. That was years and years ago, but that has just gotten very sophisticated. So phishing attacks are trying to get people to click on something. You entice them with money, or you entice them with, oh, we have great pictures of you, you know, doing something at a beach somewhere. I mean, it's amazing what people will go to and write these stories. The social engineering aspect of it, though, is they really targeted on one person now, and they will spend the time. It is a simple email, a lot of times, that is written, you know, it could come from Dr. Tally to someone in the business office. Hey, I missed this thing. Are you free right now? It's a simple question. All they wait for is one person to reply to that. They have them, and then they go through a texting, back and forth. Eventually, something's given up. It's always in the media. It's always time. That social engineering is people actually research what's out there now. They research, it could be used for something that was just purchased. They look at a board report. They look at something and go, oh, this can happen. So, they've gotten very sophisticated. Of these attacks in the phishing statistics, ninety-eight percent of attacks use social engineering now. Again, it's no longer just Bill Gates has a million dollars for you if you click on this link. We're all smart enough, no one, hopefully, no one falls for those anymore. But it are the ones that are socially engineered, where people are falling for because they feel someone's replying to them on the other side. It's not just a bot. It's not just a computer. And the one I did highlight up there, too, the LinkedIn phishing messages, we stop hundreds of those a day. So, if you're on LinkedIn, don't answer anybody on messages. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding, but it really is, that is one of the number ones that hitting every industry because it stretches across all kinds of industries. And a lot of times LinkedIn messages, people are trying to expand their network. If it's someone you don't know, assume it could be a phishing. It's just, it's just a a great, especially if you're getting an email and you don't normally get it. But we, we in this district have a lot of LinkedIn. They're catching them daily and it looks different all the time. It looks very legit. It looks really, really real, so be careful with those. That's more of a, yeah, everybody be on your guard for that one. Um one thing that we do look at when we're doing cybersecurity is I want to talk a little bit about the the framework that we kind of look at. This is kind of a national framework. This is from NIST. Um there are five points to it. We'll talk about two of the points real quick here. Uh we'll dive into the other three a little bit later, but the first one is identify. Um and that's not identify an attack happening or identify a cyber attack. That's actually going through your system, your resources and identifying what needs to be protected. In education, it's it's student data. Data is is worth more than the money they could get in a ransomware attack a lot of times. Um identifying what systems have outside access, identifying which people have access to systems, going through and really doing a a real big, you know, dive into your own infrastructure and information to say what needs to be protected. Then looking at the concept of protection and how is that protected? What systems do you have in place? Which ones, uh where can you buy products that will help you protect things? Where can you, where does training have to be involved? But really identifying not just what needs to be protected, but how to protect it. Then goes into detection, what happens when there is a a um a a hack or something happening and responding recovery. And I'll spend a little bit more time on those, but this is the framework that we look at as I go through this presentation again, identifying and protecting what we do. Um this is kind of District Two oh four in a nutshell. Now you'll notice I don't put specifics on here because you really don't want to tell all the cyber criminals that are gonna watch this video later. Kidding. Um you know, what what services we're using, but this is our our kind of our protection layer. Um there's five real layers there. Uh use this slide similar to District in Tinley Park, use something like this. Again, we have organizations where we share things, you kind of send it out. We're it's just a great graphic to kind of show the different layers that we have and where we have protection laid out. We do have stuff at the cloud. We do use two internet service providers. We do have um DDoS protection, which is denial of service, if you've heard of that. Um denial of service is usually students trying to deny the service because they don't want to take their test later. So they think if they completely saturate your network, they'll they get, they don't have to be on the internet later. Um most denial of services in the school districts around here, they have found out that they're internal and usually kids. Um but we have two internet service providers for that. We can switch one off and everyone can go out another one. Um part of that is, you know, trying to have that never down attitude. Um at the network level, we have next generation firewall. Um those are like learning firewalls. They don't, it's not just set up and it's on and it's it just works like a gatekeeper. If you don't have the key, you can get in. Old firewalls fifteen years ago, that's really kind of what they did. Um a lot of these services now are called next gen, which means they kind of learn on the fly. They they're updated automatically, it's not waiting for the weekly update. Uh it happens um in its in its um in its own AI thinking on how to stay up to date. Uh we have two things that look at wireless. We have both access point configurations so that they're not out of the box, just plug and play. And then we also have segmented wireless. Uh that means certain people can get some places with their logins, other people can't. So again, we protect services by using different different access at and for the wireless. Um on the endpoint, we have a next generation antivirus. Again, next generation, meaning it thinks and it updates on its own. I think we can all go back ten years ago, you'd have McAfee or whatever you had on your, and every time you logged in, it said you have an update waiting. That update was usually a week old and whatever was out, you know, ours are updated instantly all the time. Um they think when something in the community could post something and say, I just got hit with this, it'll update and update everybody else's automatically. It's just not always waiting for people to interact with those. Uh a lack of admin rights, and that's for all users. Uh our users in the district do not have admin rights on their desktops or their laptops. They don't even have a um local admin rights. Everything that they have to do has to go through a help desk if they need something um installed so that again, that's one barrier protection where someone can't install something. Someone can't click on a program that's set to run and install something on their laptop and then find its way through the network later. We also are using an uh increased reliance on cloud-based services. Again, when we do that, think of our student information system is in the cloud now. There's extra layers of security up there. We have layers of security down here. Someone's not gonna try to get our student data in-house because the data's not stored here. So there's those extra layers, um moving a lot of things to the cloud. At our application um layer, those are the programs and things we use. We have a layered web filter. We don't just have the one that follows everybody, uh Lightspeed that was approved for extended. We also have another built-in one that sits on our firewall that does another level of inspection again, so two different types of firewalls looking at the same data. Why is that important? Sometimes we always think of firewall not to let things in. We can also watch traffic as it goes out. So if someone does click on a link that's supposed to take them to another site where they're gonna get infected, it can it can inspect that information and not let them go to that bad site. Those next generation updates are always updating, saying this site's bad, it's got a lot of viruses on it, don't let people go to it. So we kind of, again, we just block that website. It's not one person sitting there programming in every site to to block, it's automatically updated. Um looking at two-factor authentication to start here in the next month. Um I put that on there because I it it is something that we've been working on this year. We are, uh I think, believe believe an email went out today from the department, um starting in June, we're turning that two-factor on so everyone will have two-factor authentication. Again, that's something you know and something you have. You know your password, but you also either have a phone or something else where someone can get in touch or a a an app that can say, did you just attempt to log in to this? Uh we are implementing that. Um we have application-based backup, so different systems have their own backups. Where again, if something were to get hit there, it's, we don't have to rebuild everything all at once. We can go around and go application-specific. A lot of times, since a lot of these services are in the cloud, they all have to have their own backup. It's not everything stored here. I I would truly say twenty-five years ago, everything was in-house in a building somewhere in a district and a lot of, now they sit all over in in virtual environments. So having that application-based backup protects us at every level, not just one program. We also have active email threat protection. Um that again is not just scanning emails, um but looking at the attachments that they have, seeing if they're trying to run something that might be open. It will not get to the individual for that mistake. Um we we capture a lot of that, very few even spam emails get through, as you know, when you get email every once in a while, something might. But something that would have an an immediate click on the image or here's your check, click on it, those types of emails are not getting through. We we have a very high level of uh higher level settings on those to capture most of those with uh not a lot of missed emails, not with the parents ever emailing, saying, I keep emailing you and it's not getting to you. We're not blocking legitimate, there it really is a very sophisticated system. Now at the infrastructure level, this is a little bit security and a little bit natural disaster as well. We also have multiple data centers. If something were to happen to one of the data centers, the other one is still there and can run, you know, have everything up and running. Um for infrastructure and all of our servers, we also have granular access levels there. Certain people can't get it. You might have access to to get into certain things in the district, but you're not gonna get to the servers or the areas that um that the critical data is. We also have our data backup procedures. Um we always have to have the data backup in place for everything. Uh you know, the the one thing they say when they talk about security and hacking is it's it's not if, it's when. It's it's gonna happen and those backups are critical for that final recovery aspect of of if something were to happen. But the biggest layer that's on there and it's the bottom one is the end users and we do a weekly phishing campaign. Um it's it's ongoing, it's different people every week. It's our statistics are are pretty good, but we still have a few that like to click things. We're doing that as training aspects. We can reach out to them and say, we're getting caught with this, you know, the the same time. Um we can uh make ones that are specific, looking like they come from a technology help desk and then you can always follow up with, we're never gonna ask for your your password. So if you ever get something like that, it's not legit. Uh the system actually tracks what everybody does. We can see if people open the email to ver- verify it first. We can see if they just delete it before they even open it, based on they can tell from structure points. If they open it, that they click on attachment. If they opened it and clicked on it and entered information, we can tell that they put in their login information, even though it's us doing it. Because those are the ones that we really have to watch. Um the reason I say this is it it's that it's not if, it's when. Ninety-five percent of all cybersecurity incidences are caused by one human. Not doing the phishing or the, it's the person who replied and gave their information. So the the individual training aspect is is a real big focus that we're gonna look at in the next year is to make sure that we have captured all that. In every instance, um not every instance, in most of the instances of the districts around here too, that same thing has happened. Someone's machine got hit and then when they used a VPN, someone had their access to their credentials. Um another one was just an old system that was sitting with a very old system with a very generic user. But most of the things in this area that we hear about are a person who has allowed someone in. Um it is not into the servers, it's not into where the money's at, it's just into where files are. And then someone goes to open a file and they've been ransomwared. And it's, it slowly crawls and grows into everybody's um mailboxes, I guess. Some other things that we do uh layer-wise, um other than meeting on a weekly basis, we uh we get a CISA report, which is the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency. That is the Department of Homeland Security. Uh they scan our systems every week. Um we sign that up free of charge, that's something they started last year for school districts. Uh we get about a twenty-nine page report every Monday morning, uh when after the scan is done, that tells us if there are current vulnerabilities. And again, this is updated to the National Homeland Security. Um if we have, you know, critical updates that need to be done, uh minor updates, anything like that. It it really is a a great service that a lot of school districts have taken advantage of. We use that as a kind of, nothing, you know, you know, we don't want any big reds and oranges on the mornings that we when we read them, just because it tells us that we're up to date. The very first one that went out, I I will be honest, there were quite a few that we were like, wow, didn't see it. Some old web servers, some things that have just been turned off and we're like, well, we might need that again. And no one ever looked at it, sitting in a, let's call it sitting in a closet somewhere, but still connected. Those those were dangerous, someone could have gotten into them. They couldn't have done anything there, but they would have gotten into them. Uh you know, once, once someone gets in somewhere, they think that district's vulnerable, I'm gonna keep trying and keep trying. So it's critical to try to keep people out. Uh the Learning Technology Center of Illinois, they do a a secure ed. It's a three-day, uh this it's been uh virtual the last two years, but they also do a webinar series. They were very critical in as when SOPA came out and getting school districts all on the same page, understanding the using the Illinois SOPA agreement. But they do a weekly webinar series. A lot of it has been focused on cybersecurity. It's an hour unlike a Thursday to go and listen to another school district. One nice thing about school districts is we share. So if something happened, they're very open about, here's what happened with us, here's how you can protect yourself. It was a, you know, so-and-so did this and they found, they found a way in. Um it it's good to hear that because then we can always go back and and update our systems if if we're using the same programs. We also are are part of IEETL, that's the Local Chapter of the COSIN Network or the Consortium of School Networks. Um they are again, big national industry uh with a lot of uh training involved, training opportunities, involvements, weekly webinars. We use those again. Uh being in education, we try to take as many, take advantage of as many free resources as we can. And I would say every week when we watch these or jump on a webinar, you walk away with one or two things to check. Never never huge failure points, but i- is that ongoing constant like, well, maybe we should tweak this, maybe we should tweak that. Um so we learn a lot from those groups. A another system that we use is the, it's called the MSISEC. It's an information sharing group. Um this is a a you have to be invited group. Um just me going from one district to this one, trying to get my name transferred to this district, it took like three weeks before they would verify and give me access to it. They do not let any people who might be using hacking in any way, shape or form, everyone has got to be verified. I think our main person, I believe, is Brian on our call. He had to verify who I was before they would let me back in. They're very big on also not forwarding. You can't take their emails, which are wonderful emails on things to do and forward to anybody else. They've got to be, because who knows if that person's gonna send it off to whatever the new whitelist or blacklist are that they want people to have access to. Um it really is people like us uploading and everyone saying, this group, this IP address in Russia right now hit me last night at three AM. What can we do? We all go to our firewalls and write that IP and blacklist it so it can't get in. It's little due diligence and things like that, but that is a resource. They sent three emails today. Since the conflict in Ukraine, Russia, we probably get five a day from this, but it really it is, it's on us to say, we know these are happening. Um it even to begin the conflict, I think you'll remember the news was saying, is this gonna pick up? It did, it picked up not as much in education industry, but uh just a a a wonderful site like this that just decided to share people and, you know, consider them ethical hackers to just help and make sure that the government and education systems are not, you know, falling victim to things that, and a lot of times, they might not have money to pay for. Um jumping quickly, I I didn't know where to put this slide first, so I kind of threw it into the after what we do to protect. Um there are three different cybersecurity spend methods. Uh this was actually shared during a secure ed presentation. Uh this was by Eric Wacker, who's I believe is a network administrator in District Sixty-five. I believe he's gonna be the director there next year. Uh this was a great resource and I I kind of mimicked and took the top part of the that he shared out with a a group of us. Um he notified and and looked and did a huge research where we were all looking like, what is a normal spend on cybersecurity? There's the per employee spending, which again takes us to, he's broken it down by the different gen- uh different industries. Saying if we were to go between government and all industry averages, kind of where education always fits, because it wasn't specific in the research. Again, no one has ever done that research. I think Eric is the first to do it. Our spend range for cybersecurity would be in the three point seven million to four point six million. That's almost my budget. I was really upset that I wasn't following Matt. I'm glad he's having a baby, but you know, it was gonna be the joke afterwards, after he did the budget presentation. Um it it really is, um that range, the reason it's not something that education really looks at is we are an employee business. We we have more employees than than most. So when you when you look at that, um it really doesn't make sense to spend four point six million that might save us from a four point six million average cost of a spend. You wouldn't, you know, insurance is supposed to be a fraction of what it is. Um so the two methods that we really do look at a little bit more are the portion of IT spending. Um if you were to break down the portion of IT spending, they say the industries are somewhere between seven and ten. And this has probably been a standard that we've used in conversations for quite a while, has has appeared in um a a few magazine articles and what it was, ten percent was always the the average. Um it would put us at about five hundred ninety-seven to eight hundred and fifty-three thousand as the portion of IT spend. If you were to look at the thousand dollars per revenue, it is, it jumps up to a million to one point seven. And again, the reason we're in between these two, and this was a question um from Ms. Donahue, is you know, are are we, we we fall into our current spend right now, before some things we're gonna add, is six hundred and sixty thousand. Again, right at the bottom end of the portion of IT spend, not as much as as the revenue spend. Um the the reason we kind of look at both of those and you try to find an area in between them is not all districts, our portion of our overall revenue is not the same for every school district in in IT. Uh an average is somewhere between two point seven and three percent. To do that, my budget would go up um to to meet that two point seven to three percent. Um again, not every district even spends the money from their IT budget in the same way. Um coming here, Todd's department does a lot of the behind the walls wiring and all of those kinds of things. In previous districts, that was also part of an IT spend. So again, we have these fluid parts that not all districts are managed the same, but we all kind of fall into those realms. Um right now, again, at at six hundred and sixty, that seems a little low to our size. Um one point seven to me also seems like we'd be overspending. I think that's one thing in my in my first year, I've renegotiated a lot of contracts to say, let's not overspend, let's make sure we have the areas covered, what things need to be protected. Um so as we go into these next few parts of the the NIST model um of repair or uh detect and and recovery, you'll see a little bit a- as this breaks down as to what is probably a more appropriate spend amount. Going back to the cybersecurity framework, the one area that our team looked at was, the one thing we're kind of missing is the detection, um when something does happen. Now, um we have things set up so that if something were to be getting hit or we we did have like a, you know, a DDoS uh three or four weeks ago, Comcast caught it quickly and notified us. The notification came at like four in the morning, it was an email. So it's not until you go and check your email. We don't have our emails set to buzz us, we don't have twenty-four hour, seven people working. Luckily with this, and it was in Comcast, Comcast shut that down right away, so it didn't affect us in a sense, but it did make us think, what about other things that happen in the detection model? Um three of the districts that were hit and shared in the pre- that had attacks in in this last year and a half. Three of the districts that were hit and shared in the pre- that had attacks in, in this last year and a half, that shared, um, information last summer, two of them were hit from Russia at three AM. That's when they start going to work. Again, we don't have people sitting there at three AM for the detection. So one area that we're really looking to improve on is our detection. What does that look like? How will we know if something is being, um, you know, attacked or, or fished around without waiting for the email or someone to get the text message from the system that says it's happening? One thing we are looking at using this year, and this is just a graphic from their, their company CrowdStrike, is adding a CrowdStrike Complete platform. It will replace our antivirus with a, um, what's called their Falcon Complete. Really is just an antivirus, uh, next generation antivirus, which we're using now. The difference is with this one, it comes with a twenty-four seven monitoring tool. Uh, and current, this one I do not have written up there. Currently, statistics say that it takes a company a hundred and twenty hours to detect something happening on their network. So five days-ish to find out if something is happening on your network. After it's been detected, it takes about eleven hours to investigate it, on average, from everything from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. It also then takes thirty-one hours to remediate it. All in all, that's seven days of not knowing what's going on. If you remember, a, a school up north, Rockford District was hit a few years ago. I think they might be going on four or five years now. That, when they were hit, the person doing the work was in there for days, uh, from what we were told, sitting on an old building automation system, but able to actually hit their backups first, so that when they actually said, well, we'll just get rid of the ransomware and go and pull our backups, their backups were ransomed as well. Detection is so key, that's the one thing we're missing. With this Falcon Complete, um, I, I, there's a part of me that wants to say, a few of the other districts that were shared last summer too are now using this platform and swear by it. So one of the things we are looking at, but, uh, Falcon Complete with CrowdStrike, their average detection time is one minute. They have a one-ten-sixty rule. Minute to detection, ten minutes to investigate, and sixty minutes to remediation. Their average for all of their customers across all different platforms is actually one minute to detect, six minutes to investigate, and twenty-nine minutes to remediate. To the point that we don't even have to do the remediation. Something happens at three AM, they, in all of the setup and rules, it would say, this computer just got hit. We, they have access to go in, remove, remove the little whack-a-mole, you know, virus that they planted and is gonna jump around before it can even get back on the network. It is, um, it's like adding an entire department of twenty people to watch computers, but not paying for twenty people to watch computers. It really is a on-demand system, um, it, it's in the, if you've ever seen the Gartner grids, you know, it is the, the top Gartner grid, it doesn't mean you're paying for the top Gartner grid, it is just up there. Our current net, next generation antivirus is the one, one step below it, but it doesn't offer that detection piece, and that's what we feel, uh, from our department is the one thing that's missing, is that we're not a twenty-four seven shop, we sleep. So looking at this again, the, the three cybersecurity spend models, removing the antivirus and some other shifts, our next year's fiscal spend is going to be eight hundred and sixty thousand. Do we think that's still accurate? I, I would say yes. I, again, part of the figures you're not gonna see in there, um, you don't see our cyber insur-, uh, cybersecurity insurance deductible, not deductible, um, installment that we have to make on a yearly basis to have cybersecurity. Portions of all of our staff who are due security now, they're, in most industries, parts of their salaries are included in there. So it's that, I know what I spend on everything that is specifically for cybersecurity, that's about eight hundred and sixty thousand. Those other add-ons will get us up into the next range. There is one area that we are, um, currently still looking at, um, which is a little bit more on identity management, that is a, a newer, um, probably newer to cybersecurity now. We're at, like, just like we can watch all the computers and everything that they're doing. This would be something where a twenty-four seven person can also watch every person's login. So if all of a sudden they start to notice, let's say, Ms. Barry's account is all of a sudden logging into servers it doesn't normally log into, someone looks into that quickly. Her credentials were hacked, she didn't know her credentials were hacked, and the system takes over with AI because the user's doing something different. Using systems we have with Rapid Identity, our S S O, they have, um, things that scan out there where our credentials might be s- stored now. I don't know if anyone's ever seen that, if you've ever gone to Pwned me, the P W N E D, and typed in your email address, it'll tell you if your information is on any hack out there. There are systems now that do that and notify us right away. This person's information is out there and we can email it to the person and go, is this your current password? Yes, change it. There's things like that that we can do as well. So we are looking at some of those. Microsoft has a tool as well. Again, we're trying to do this one piece at a time, so we're gonna be doing the Falcon Complete, roll out here at the beginning, just this summer, but then we are looking at what's next after our S S O switching multi-factor. Is that a route we have to go? Can we segment down even more, or should we really look at identity? Those get a little more expensive. Some of the products we're looking at is twenty dollars a user. One of the reasons we're kinda passing on it now is they won't segment out a lot of these companies' student users from staff. Twenty dollars a user for thirty thousand people's a lot different than twenty dollars a user for three thousand staff members. Students are mostly in Google, so we're not sure we need to include that. Uh, we're working with companies on what that could look like for education, I think. Again, identity management, multiple different companies can do it, but that would be one thing I think that we will look to be adding, look to add. Just not sure when or, um, when these companies will probably restructure themselves to be ready for education. I think right now they're set up as a top of the line. The next layer to go to is, is honestly is zero trust. Now, if you've ever heard of that, that's, don't trust anybody anywhere, anytime, on anything. Which means every time you log into something, it's gonna ask you to verify. The next time you go and switch to a different application on your computer, it's gonna ask you to verify again. People are already mad if their computer goes asleep in thirty minutes. Can you imagine if we tell them every time they go to a new zero trust? A lot of businesses are doing that, banking industries and stuff like that. Zero trust doesn't, doesn't really have a place in education, but it is, it's that, it's that, you know, the, the, the tip of the iceberg, and that's really more of a practice change, not really, not really a cost. It's saying, we don't trust any of you anymore, anywhere. You're always gonna have to verify, you're gonna get a cell phone, you gotta bump that, do retina scans, I mean, I don't know what entails, but, uh, zero trust really is that concept that anything new you're gonna go into, you'll have to re-authenticate. If you sit there for twenty minutes and do nothing, it's gonna ask you to re-auth authenticate. So some of our next steps, um, that we do have in place, other than we are adding that CrowdStrike is, we did have posted and we're doing interviews this week, we are looking, um, to hire back a, a Director of Technology, Security, and Infrastructure Systems. Uh, we used to have an Assistant Director, uh, that position was never refilled. We're kind of adjusting that a little bit. Uh, we'll add support to both the data, the server and infrastructure team, the network team. Those are the three teams that deal heavily with the network access, things like that. So to have one person oversee it all, it's not everyone doing their own thing. We have all three teams on the same page. Um, we're gonna continue to monitor that financial impact of cy- cybersecurity. It, is it really gonna be, cause even taking our eight, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand and say we've gotta add fifteen percent every year for the next five years to that, Matt's shown me what my budget's gonna be in five years. It doesn't look like it's going up fifteen percent to add that. Again, that was, it would've been funnier if Matt was here. It's, uh, the, um, we're looking to refresh the disaster recovery plan. We do have one, a disaster recovery plan, again, a long time ago, was probably not based on cybersecurity. The one that we found here was more based on if something natural disaster-wise happened, or a fire and something and everything burned down. What we're looking to do is just refresh it, we don't need to reinvent it, but we really do need to look at, it's probably a lot of different systems and stuff. We're also looking at creating a business continuity plan. We don't have something like that in place. That me, that is, a- and again, that's natural disaster, cybersecurity, anything. It really is, this director role can really look at that, involve the HR team, involve the business department. Again, something happens and systems go down, how are we paying people? We, let's, our, again, our student information system is in the cloud. We lose access to it, how are we taking attendance? There are a lot of things that we still have to do on a daily basis if things go down. Putting a business continuity plan for all of those things, involving all the other departments, so that when something doesn't happen, everyone is standing at tech's door going, what do we do? Because really, if a cybersecurity attack or, or, um, natural disaster happens, it's not just a tech issue, it's an everybody issue, so we've gotta get everybody together to look at that. Key to doing those, those will then help us respond and recover. Again, respond is that immediate, what are we doing quickly? What are we doing to make sure that something doesn't get worse? It's very hard in tech, we always think, oh, this thing has, just got hit and it's got a ransomware. What's the first thing we tell everybody to do to fix something?
Reboot.
Reboot.
Yeah.
And then honestly, actually, but everyone in cybersecurity tells you, don't touch it. You call the insurance, cybersecurity insurance first, they'll tell you, because they can get a fingerprint before you restart. Everyone in tech is afraid of what it's gonna look like? Well, if I just reboot it, maybe they won't know. And it usually makes it worse, cause now we don't have a trail to find it. So that respond is literally putting that out there. If this happens, here's what we do, don't restart, don't do this. We have steps to jump in place and make sure that we're tracking these things correctly. And then again, the recover, how do we get everything back to normal? Key to those then again are gonna be testing these. That is one thing I did find out in the disaster recovery plan that was written. It was, it was written, it was never once tested. So we have to test those. Those are usually done in the summer. And trust me, if we tell people here everything's gonna turn off, can we go home? No. It, it, um, you know, but there are things we have to test and how do we get it back up? How do we lose, lose a segment of files and then make sure that we re, um, can go back and get them? We do backups all the time, we know how to go and recover them, but we've never really tried a full recovery backup. And then keep those in the yearly, where we're evaluating, refreshing, monitoring, and testing those things on a regular basis, both the continuity plan and the disa- disaster recovery plan. Any questions?
Okay, um, Ms. Fostick. All right, first I'm gonna say thank you, um, for being such a good caretaker of this live. I'm gonna call it garden, cause that's the mood I'm in right now with spring. This feels like a live garden, we gotta keep the pests out, we gotta keep the traffic, we gotta keep it growing, keep all the good stuff in. So thank you for your continual, ongoing, constant management of that, cause it seems like it might even still be happening in the middle of the night, even if you're saying it's not. It seems like maybe sometimes it is. You got that going on all the time. Did I miss somewhere? Did you tell us exactly how much CrowdStrike is for us to add that piece?
The entire crowds, it's, it, the difference is two hundred thousand, because it has parts that the other part is wiping away. It is, because it's a, because different districts have different rates, I can share that with you.
Okay.
I, I can, I don't have a problem sharing that, but again, it's different districts, we're a large, nice district, we, I don't wanna share, cause then everyone's gonna call and go, yeah, right.
That's good.
They'd share you what the bottom line is.
Um, and my last note is, I appreciate hearing, and I hope other community members appreciate hearing, from the business continuity plan aspect, what happens if all that cloud data disappears or isn't accessible for a period. Um, I'm gonna remind myself of that in August, when I'm filling out all my students' paperwork for each school, and my hand's getting tired, that we gotta have those physical copies still. So I appreciate the reminder that, that's one of the ways we can have that back up.
Registration opened this morning at ten, you can just.
Perfect, I could just do that. And then still fill out the classroom cards. Yep. Thank you. Ms. Grover.
Wow, I didn't know so much was involved in the backend. The way I see it, I see staff using computers and the students using computers. Um, you talked about like phishing and LinkedIn, and that's, I see more staff-related issues. What have you come across? I know sometimes kids will go to, students will go to different websites and they're blocked, but what other, um, have you experienced with students?
You know, really that's it, cause they're, they're using Google Mail, so very little gets into them like phishing-wise, because they use the Google filter. Younger students don't even get the email from outside the domain. I wouldn't, I think we see more from students, the creative side of students than we, than we do any malicious work. Let's just put it that way. You know, they, they, they like, there's programming sites, they like to go to their games, but that's not really a cybersecurity. They feel like they're going around the network, but they're on a site we've given them access to so they can create things. It's, it's, um, they're, they don't have access to the systems even if a student, e- even if someone were to email a phishing attack on a student, their account's not gonna get them anywhere. They don't have that kind of network access.
And, and the reason I ask that is because there are parents who are concerned, and so it's good to know, it's good for the parents to know that nothing is getting into their emails, um, into the kids' emails.
If we could get the kids to check their email, because that's not something they do.
That's true. I really like your, for lack of a better word, like the circle compass, recover, identity, protect. Yeah, um, identify, what recommendations or what advice do you have for staff? Not students as much, cause nothing gets in. How to identify, what should they be looking for? Is there anything like, cause if they can do one part of that circle?
You know, I, I really think for them, it's the protection part, but it's, and that's what we're trying to do with that phishing aspect. It's, it's really, again, turning multi-factor on for them is gonna protect them a lot. I, I think it's the unknowingly clicking on things. The social engineering aspect in education, I think, hit education hard. We're, we're helpful people, we wanna answer, and when they get something from a principal or who they think is their principal, they answer the email quickly. And once they're hooked, th- they're hooked. So I, I don't, it's, it's more that training aspect for, for staff. You know, teaching them that, uh, challengeable passwords are, are, are better than changing it all the time and just adding numbers. I really, I don't think anything is, is malicious, if anything, we've undertrained some to just continue with that. How, how would you, how would you further train them on what can happen? I think right now we tell them, you need a hard password, they don't know why. Part of the systems we're looking at next year is, we use, the district does the G C N trainings, we're looking at updating that with a little bit more layman's terms as to what can happen, and not just statistics, but really how it's simple to fall for things and really what they can do. Is, is probably our best.
Do they, do the staff get informed, like, I don't know, every month? Like you said, you get your weekly report every month, like, hey, look, be on the lookout for this or be on the lookout for this.
We, we will if we know something serious is coming, but a lot of times, um, one, it's a little bit easier for us to just make those changes in the system and not let anything in front of them, if that makes sense. They, they really do not, I, I would honestly probably say ninety-nine point nine percent of the emails they get are direct emails from them or something that they've signed up for. We are, we are very diligent about making sure that our spam filters and phishing aspects and, um, identity changes where it looks like a principal's name, but it's not, someone else created, it does not get through.
You know, when we think of safety, we forget about cybersecurity, so I wanna thank you for keeping our students safe in that manner, and our s- staff as well, so thanks. Mr. Carubus.
Well, I feel a little bit like a caveman attorney, trying to, which is good, I guess, listening to the tech guy. Um, we've come a long way from a computer lab and two computers playing Oregon Trail and Math Blasters. I can appreciate the fact that we have, that it's hard to put it into buckets, what's under Todd's budget, uh, what's under the personnel, what's under equipment. Two areas I'd like to either have a report from you or in conjunction with the business office is, is the comparables and the evidence-based funding adequacy. There are some difficulties with comparables, but you could pick some items, low-hanging fruit, that, uh, we could see where we're, we're doing with our other districts. I think we need to, to see that. You gave some industry standards, um, but we spend a lot of time making sure we beat other districts, and I wanna make sure we keep doing that, so pick some good factors. The evidence-based funding formula has us with an adequacy target of three fifty, three hundred and fifty million. And we're, our adequacy spend is two hundred and ninety million. So there's a deficiency there. And one of the factors that goes into that formula is computer tech equipment. So that's an easy area where you could pick that fun, that factor, state says we spend X, we should be spending X. There's a deficiency of, you know, Y, and then how does that compare to the other districts? So that, um, So that um we could see, and I know it bleeds over to the business office. But it it works for how, you know, you're throwing around numbers, how much we spend on this, that and the other thing. You were talking jokingly about our budget going like this. But what if the rest of the districts are doing the same because of, that's the economics of the job, or, you know, it, a computer costs less than it did ten years ago. So we just need to see the comparables, I think, uh comparables and then the adequacy target. And it doesn't have to be very in-depth, but a couple of slides on that, I think the board would appreciate in a future report.
Sure.
Thanks.
Right, Ms. Dumbing needs to save her vocal cords this evening, but wanted to say thank you. She works at Elgin Community College and higher education campuses are doing exactly the same tests with staff and faculty for phishing, et cetera. It really helps the users to be more cognizant, so thank you. Mr. Rising.
Can you go to slide fourteen? I think it was the one, no, yeah, right there. So Rodney and I have had quite a few conversations about this, because this is an area that I'm kind of passionate about. And and what, first what I will say is, some of the things, and Rodney was very careful to skirt around what's in place, but. From what I know, some of the things that we have in place, only ten to twenty percent of K-12 school districts have in place right now. That's something to feel really good about, but at the same time, Mr. Mack mentioned, it's not necessarily. If it might happen, it's when it might happen, right? So if somebody's focused on our district, they definitely could try to do damage. But um I I felt pretty good knowing some of the things that we have in place behind the scenes. And what's really scary about this, because I've done a lot of reading on articles, is that if they can get into our systems, they lock everything down. I mean, there was, there was a Texas district, same size as ours, about twenty-five thousand kids, thirty-five hundred staff members, they locked them down for a month. And they had to pay, now look at this slide, they had to pay over five hundred thousand dollars to get their systems unlocked. And they had student data, they had staff data. You know, it 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 can be pretty scary, and if you think about it, and Mr. Mack mentioned this too, I mean, that's how our teachers are giving assignments, that's how our teachers are teaching, that's how our teachers are putting grades in. I mean, and our phone systems are tied to technology as well. So um what I will say here is that, you know, there was only one time in my time as a board member that I voted to go over what we budgeted. And it was in technology, when we had to go into fund balances for technology. I think this is an extremely important area. And the reason why more so now than ever is because the hackers are focusing on education, because they, education put a lot of stuff in place over the last two years and didn't secure it. Because they put stuff in for curriculum, and now those hackers are going after it. I just read another article by Bloomington District eighty-seven, downstate, five thousand kids, they had to pay a three hundred percent increase in their cybersecurity insurance, because they didn't have stuff in place. So, you know, I say that as a board, we make sure we're allocating enough money here. You know, I'm excited about to hear about the Falcon Complete with the with the CrowdStrike, I think that's awesome. I'm excited we're looking at two F A, I would love to see us go M F A, that's role-based as well. And um, you know, just my personal opinion, this is not an area that we want to skim our money on, um, you know. And 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 I've seen other districts who have received a lot of S R funds, way more than us, that are putting a lot of money into cybersecurity stuff right now. Because of what happened, like up in Rockford and and other areas throughout the country. I I was just looking at a district the other day, and I was able to find, I'm not going to say where this district was, it was not in the state. But I was able to find a way to reset stu, a student password. And I don't even have a student at that school district. You know, it it it's pretty crazy what's out there. So I'm thankful that you guys and your team are are looking after us, and and you guys got some of the things in place, and are and are looking towards the future too, so thanks.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you, Mr. Mack, for helping um me appreciate how delicate of an area this is, where an individual, a single individual can cause a good amount of damage. And that message is something I heard, and um appreciate you explaining to me. If we could go to slide number four, this is kind of going off of uh Board Member Carubus's comments. I'm just curious to know, how how does our district compare to some of these numbers? If if there's, if there's any numbers, or generally speaking, how are we doing in comparison to the trends? In com, in comparison generally to our nearby districts?
Uh we haven't had a ransomware, um I mean, we we have had phishing attacks where people have given out their credentials and, you know. Usually, it's happened a handful of times, the staff members quickly understand they did it and will send it, and it's changed. We've never had anyone get into a system, we did have a brute force attack two months ago. It was stopped quickly, um brute force meaning they got into, they found it, and and again, this was similar to a Rockford, they found an old system that didn't have anything on it, and then they were just trying to find accounts. They couldn't find accounts after they got there, but that that's again, probably why we started this conversation too of, all right, we need to do a better job of identifying. Again, this was something sitting in a closet, let's, you know, really wasn't, but I mean, it was something that wasn't used much anymore. We've never had anything that processed anything, we've never had to dip into cyber insurance. Most of it's either a phishing attack, again, part of that is when someone understands it quickly, that detection, they're able to tell us, I just gave out my credentials I probably shouldn't have. You know, it's funny, the minute someone does something and it didn't look right, they're very quick to email and go, I don't think I should have done that. Yet they can't at the incense, at the instance of it, go, should I be sending this? But once they hit it and they realize it didn't take them wherever they thought, so it's very easy to quickly change that. But I mean, that's similar to any district, I think, you know, um everyone has their, let's just call them little snafus, but it's enough to go, had that little snafu happened at the right time and the right person was on the other end, it could have been a different story, so.
That's good to know, and that's probably due to all of the preparedness, um the first two elements of the framework that you showed us about our ability to identify and um protect.
Protection layers, yeah.
And you're, you mentioned that you are finding the the training methods to be effective, like the individual training to be effective.
That's that's something we're going to redo this.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually have a meeting next week with uh Brian, do you have any innovations? I had to really look at what's out there on our, what our current training model is, is a few years old that that we use for GCN. Um and possibly looking at something a little more updated with some very, you know, key point. I remember this year, when I started this year, it would, I had to take it and I kind of went, I don't think we use that anymore. I mean, it was literally like, someone, we should have updated it, but I again, I think during the pandemic, a lot of stuff got put, you know, pushed to the side. So we are looking at doing that, um where I think the follow-up happens a little bit more is on our phishing campaign. Right now, we kind of have little email reminders and stuff, but is there training that can join that? Kind of two-minute clip that show them why what they did was, and again, not as an I got you, I think that's, it's the same thing, I, you know. As a teacher, I was the same way, let's, everything's about, you know, learning something new, it's not about how we caught you doing this, we don't want that mentality, so. Once the initial training, but then also what do we do during our campaigns? Because again, ninety-five percent of everything has happened because someone did that, someone let someone in, someone opened up their computer and, you know, their VPN is the one that got hit. That's what happened in some of the south districts, you know, again, we sent out VPN because we went through the pandemic, luckily that hasn't happened to us. But um it is those little, sometimes they're just not used to it. Again, a a really well-engineered, social engineered, can catch anybody off guard. I mean, I I've talked to board members in other districts that came and told me, yeah, I got hit with that.
Yeah.
Literally, for their company, not in this, not in the school district, so-and-so emailed, it was a name, well, sure enough, that was an article in the newspaper, they'd done business, and someone made a fake name and, hey, can you, all the person did was forward it to their secretary, hey, can you pay that, I think we missed it, it was paid. Again, how we do business, you know, fell for it and just forwarded it off, someone else made the mistake, but again, it was that simple, money was gone.
I would imagine that attackers being creative, becoming more and more creative, and so you have to be on your toes to be able to.
They can spend twenty minutes.
Respond and train accordingly.
Looking up stuff online, you know, they call that spear phishing, they pick a person, find out things about it, not just phishing. Now they're going after the one, and they're, they pick it and they go, this will work, I'll catch them, I know the secretary's name, I know this and this, and they, it's great if.
And so as we update and upgrade and make our processes um more effective, do you see it affecting the user experience a whole lot?
I I try not to, and again, that's the educator side in me, and that, like I talked about zero trust, it doesn't work in education. Again, I think I said in the, in the fall, when I I have that secure not block, you know, a block is a, would affect people. When we can figure out how to secure it and and change a practice or a little bit of training, I think people understand. And again, everyone feels better, no, no one, there's also no one in the district that wants to be the person that let the person in and held it for ransom for four point seven million. They don't want that on their head either, you know, so.
Great, well, that's all, thank you so much.
So I think the board, you heard from several of the board members about how important this uh area is for us. I know when I looked at your slides ahead of time, that slide fourteen really jumped out at me, because I saw kind of a vastly different set of numbers on how much we should be spending. And I was worried, I understand our budget constraint, so I immediately uh thought, this is not an area where we need to be extremely conservative in. Because it's uh so critical to the welfare of our um our district. So you mentioned, when you were talking, that typically um two point seven to three percent of the I T budget is security, is that?
Two point seven to three percent of a district's overall revenue.
Oh, yeah.
It is, the last time we did comparatives, which I, comparatives, which was a lot of Kane and DuPage County schools only filled out, um that's about where most fell, between two point seven and three. Again, but not everyone looks at, again, that's the hard part, it's not everyone's I T budget covers the same thing. So that's where it's, that's where it fell, but some could be a lot higher, because they, some don't even pay for the phones, that's paid for out of the building, you know what I mean? So, and that's a huge chunk for us, that's an extra million that, so it's, it is, you're you're hitting a moving target, depending on how every district is. I think if if I take Justin's advice and we kind of dig dig a little deeper, we might be able to pull and say, well, what should be in that I T budget? But again, we can't mandate how every school does their budgeting.
Yeah, I mean, I I I do think the board would benefit from seeing that and um understanding more if we see there's uh gaps of opportunity that we need to focus on. I, the eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar spend that you're projecting for next year, that includes the CrowdSight um strike piece.
It it does, yeah, and that's not an increase either, that's of renegotiated some other contracts and found some savings in other places. Again, a lot of moving parts, that was reevaluating phone system, things like that, we, none of this involves new money. This is all in my budget that Matt's already given me, it's just.
Yeah.
Putting it in a better place, let's put it that way.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to imply that we want to be wild spenders here or anything, I mean, I I appreciate the um methods to try and uh get contract prices down and things. And I know outside of this meeting, there were questions about some of the contracts and things, so it was good to hear that you have success in that way. But yeah, I I do think that this is such a critical area. I notice I have an update light on my on my computer, so I'm going to have to make sure I update this. But I also thank you so much for the um comments about uh the phishing and that forty-seven percent of the phishing attacks on social media are associated with LinkedIn. Because I have been getting a lot of LinkedIn requests lately, like I I generally get them regularly, but I've noticed in the last couple of weeks, a lot more. And uh I'm certainly going to be extremely careful with who I accept a request from uh after listening to this talk. So um so thank you very much, very critical area for our district. All right, next we have legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. Anyone have comments or? I did uh attend the large unit district, did I talk about that last time? I don't remember. I did, no, okay. It was a focus on equity this time, and I do believe they will be sending out some information and charts on that. And um once I receive those, I will get them, um but it was, it was very interesting information and helpful, so. And I think everyone received the Len uh charts also about the different actions that are going down in Springfield, so. All right, with that, I need a motion to adjourn in a second.
Motion to adjourn.
There a second? All in favor?
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you.